Good evening, welcome to the May 17th, 2018, meeting of the North Andover School Committee. We will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to silence your cell phones, and the meeting's being recorded. And we will start with public comment. Seeing no public comment, we will move on to recognition. And the first we have is to accept a donation of a scoreboard, or scoreboards, from Commonwealth Motors.
Laura, come on down.
Have Laura come up?
Right there.
To the microphone.
Laura Halbacher, our athletic director, we're excited to have you. And can you just explain the donation?
And take the microphone.
And make sure you're talking into the microphone.
Yes.
Welcome to the school committee. It's your first appearance.
Thank you. This is my first appearance.
That's pretty good, after nine months, only having to come once.
Not bad. So the scoreboards, Commonwealth Motors has generously donated scoreboards for football, baseball, and basketball, offered to donate, we haven't done it yet, to the tune of about 28,000 for the outdoor ones, and about 17,000 for the indoor ones, including installation. The outdoor ones were not functioning very well in the fall, and it was timing perfect, because the estimate to fix it was about 14,000. So, these are going to be solar, there will be a battery backup, so hopefully we won't have too many issues with it. And we're working out logistics in terms of, you know, installing it once you allow us to do it. I did include some pictures, I'm not sure if you saw those. The sizes on those might, they're the same size as the outdoor ones are currently, the indoor ones is the one where we'll be new, in a place where you could actually see it. So, and that is about it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like a motion to accept this donation. I'd like to say that Charlie Dare and his family are generous, not only to North Andover, but the entire Merrimack Valley, they've been generous and big supporters of athletic sports for so many years. I think this is an incredible gift and donation from them, and I'll happily make a motion to accept it.
Second? Motion made by Mr. Triscie. Second by Ms. Vitski Lynch. Any other conversation?
I always have a question about things. So I'm wondering, do we have a policy about using logos and slogans and stuff like that on school things? And if we do have a policy, does this meet it?
Yes, so we looked at this in the fall. So we do have a policy, but this is within the realm of us allowing us to do it.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say that one of the hazards of being on the school committee is when you are at your child's sporting events, and there's something like half the numbers, you can't tell what the score is, because the numbers are out, they ask you why you can't get some new light bulbs put in it. So I'm very happy that I won't have those questions in the future if we accept this donation. So, we have motion, should we vote? Mr. Triscie?
Yes, we should vote.
Vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, very good, this is exciting, and thank you, this is a very generous donation, and we are fortunate to have it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done, first time.
Yay!
I knew it, everybody.
And then, there's also, there's also the protocol that you get to leave, and we don't judge.
Go back to baseball.
Yeah, there you go. We know you, you're late nights.
And then, next, we have a pretty exciting event to discuss, Race Amity Day. We have students here with-
I'll allow Dr. Gilligan to-
With the remarks.
Great, I'd like to welcome Jelicia and Jocelyn, one's from Wisconsin, one's a former Thompson student, and Ms. Marks to talk a little bit about race amity, and how we've got to where we are, so.
All right, so I'm not going to speak too long, we had another student, Jocelyn and Kaitlyn Parks spoke at the Board of Selectmen meeting a couple of weeks ago. Kaitlyn, today's her birthday, so she cannot be here, she has plans in Boston, so I'm going to take a little bit of her part here. But race amity really came out of our first North Andover reads, when we had a Mass Humanities grant for Dr. William Smith, who is the Director of the National Center for Race Amity. Race Amity talks about kind of the other, what he calls the "other tradition," which is friendship among races. And so, some of that theme has kind of carried on the past couple of years. And this year, we sent Brian Sheehy, who is our Department Head of History at the high school, and some students to the Race Amity Conference. And on the way home from the conference, the kids decided, they really felt that they should do something here in North Andover. So this is really a student-driven event. So they've come up with a lot of ideas, and Mr. Sheehy, myself, Courtney Ahern, and our librarian, Kathleen Keenan, is also involved. So the four of us, the four of us as adults have been supporting the students in terms of whatever efforts they want to make toward this. So we are going to have our first Race Amity Day, Sunday, June 10th, from 10:00 to 12:00 at the high school. And we have a variety of events, the girls will share some of that with you, I'm not going to steal their thunder. And the kids at the school have been doing a lot of work, they're putting together a video that's going to be shown during advisory, trying to get other kids there, talking about the importance of race amity, and why we're having such an event on the 10th. We have no idea how many people are going to show up, this is really kind of a grassroots sort of thing. Early in March, Kathleen Keenan, myself, and Courtney went down to Wheelock College on a Saturday, and they had a conference on planning these kind of events. So there were a few people that spoke, aside from Dr. Smith, who does a big event on the Greenway in Boston, most of the events were really small. There was a musician from Berkeley, who had some people come hang out in his backyard, and they played different kinds of music, so there were things like that. There was a couple of people from Linfield, who had an event after the election this year, trying to bring people together in that town, and it was really just a casual picnic. So, our event is actually a little different, and I imagine that we may be presenting next year at the conference with some of our students. So, we did get the proclamation, which I think is up there, I don't know how well people can see this, but this is a proclamation that the Board of Selectmen made. So the governor has deemed the second Sunday in June, Race Amity Day, and now the town of North Andover has done that as well. So we were very proud of the students for the work that they did toward that, and I'm going to let the girls talk a little bit more.
Hi, everyone, my name is Jocelyn Avila, I'm from the North Andover High School, and I'm a senior, so I'm graduating, and I'm going to be attending Framingham State in the fall. I'm here to talk a little bit about how race amity came about, and why it is important to our town. The way I found out about race amity was just really me speaking to Mr. Sheehy about how passionate I feel about the diversity that we have in this town, and how much I want to show how many different cultures and ideas we have here in North Andover. And he introduced to me the idea that we're going to have a day where we're going to introduce, from the students and many other people in our neighboring towns, like Lawrence, and Methuen, Hayrow, so on, just the kind of culture that we have here in Massachusetts itself. So I felt really passionate since the sixth grade, when I first attended North Andover Middle School, that I wanted to show my diversity from where I'm from, because I am a mixed Hispanic girl, I am Mexican and Dominican, so from the beginning, from when I was very young, it was very difficult for me to be included into my own culture. So me being included into North Andover was also very important to me, and that's the way I was included, was meeting people who were most similar to who I was. And to me, it was okay at first, because everyone goes to where they feel most comfortable, but I feel like getting out of our comfort zones is the best way to meet new people and do much more with their life, and just growing to understand and educate ourselves with the diversity that we have in North Andover, because we have many talented and diverse students in North Andover High School that we should introduce and showcase, that have many opportunities. And the reason why I love the town of North Andover, because it gave me so many opportunities to show who I am, and the talent that I have, as well as my friends. And that's what I want this day to do, is to show the talents that we have. So we have many events that showcase the different diversities and cultures we have in the school, like for example, we're going to have different types of desserts and treats for everyone to snack on, nothing too heavy, like a meal, just little finger food. And we also have different types of music, as well as different cultural dances from the dance team that we created in the high school, which is fairly new. We performed for the pep rally, we performed for the basketball halftime game shows, and in the cultural dances, we have African music, Indian, Hispanic cultures, and many more. We're also going to have like lion dancing from the Vietnamese people, and just an art exhibit from everyone who wants to like create art that showcases how they feel about the diversity we have in our school, too. The reason why I'm saying all this, I'm just running off about it, is because it's important for me to have everyone understand that everybody in the high school, it should be included and accepted for who they are, no matter where they come from, or what language they speak, because in North Andover High, we have many people from different countries even coming there and attending our school. So just showing how important our little town is, will do so much for this town and the future of it. And going on from this, we're going to have Race Amity every second Sunday of June, and we're also going to try to create a club in the high school, for students to maybe start fundraisers and community service, just to help, and like activities. And my friend right here, Jelicia Susanna, she's going to hopefully be our future captain of that club, since she's going to be a senior next year, so just going to introduce her.
Hi, I'm Jelicia Susanna, I'm from the North Andover High School, I moved here from Lowell when I was younger. I'm a junior, so I'm happy to take this role as the new captain of this race group that we are creating. The dance club, I am also part of, I'm also co-captain for that next year. It has done a lot for me, like it has brought me out of my shell a lot, and like showed me all of the talent that we have in the school throughout every culture. Race Amity Day is going to be very important to me, because like it shows everything that we work hard for, and it shows all the different talents that we have throughout our school.
And the things that we care about in the school, and so on. And I know in the high school, people look forward to sports and clubs that they're going to join, and sometimes people are disappointed, because they don't make those sports or clubs. So our club is going to be very inclusive, to have everyone join and feel welcome, we're going to have many activities from different sports, to different music, art, food, so, and so on. But thank you for having us here, by the way.
Can you remind everyone when and where?
Yes. So Race Amity Day is going to be June 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the North Andover High School, in the cafeteria courtyard area. Thank you.
Beautifully done, ladies. Very impressive plan, yes. I know, it's the last couple of weeks, we've had a lot of students come in and talk with us, and it's incredibly inspiring, I think, to all of us to hear how beautifully you present what you care about, so thank you. Do you have anything else for that, or? Okay, then I'd love to invite Kaitlyn and Liam to come up for their student report. And you can report first, that all the AP tests are finished, right?
One more, sophomores have Euro tomorrow, but other than that, everyone is done, which is fantastic. Seniors have their last six more days, actually-
That's all?
I think skip day is going to be Monday, so five more days. Sorry, well, I don't, I think everyone knows. But yeah, so-
Got to watch the weather.
Yeah, we'll see how that goes, but six more official days, so yeah, we're kind of just coasting through to the finish, it's pretty awesome, I think everyone's in positive spirits, happy mood. Kaitlyn, and I, this whole week's been really positive.
So yeah, so I'm going to talk a little bit about Dude Be Nice Week, which is happening at the high school right now, that's why I have my phone, and kind of have a PowerPoint that we made, just to make sure I don't forget anything. So it was kind of an idea that some of the E-Board officers and student council kind of came up with, kind of, we go to a bunch of conferences, and we always hear about how these schools are doing stuff, almost like, almost like two spirit weeks, or something towards the end of the year, that kind of just like, almost increases the attitude, they'll be like happier, because it's like towards the end of the year, it starts to get hot, and then you start to be like, wow, I wish I was out of here. And so it's just a way to kind of remake people happy about coming to school. And so, it started on Wednesday, and that was kind of our kickoff day, where we kind of showed a video and advisory, to kind of explain what it was. And then we also worked on a "You Are Loved" wall, which was basically had everyone in the whole school's name on a sticky note, that spelled out "You Are Loved," and so, I was really happy with how that turned out, because those were definitely difficult to write. And then we decorated like the whole hallway, and it was just really cool. And then today was Take a Leap Day, and so it was basically just like trying to encourage people to do something outside of their comfort zone. We actually tried to encourage the teachers to participate as well, and so some of the teachers ended up swapping during their prep period, and coming into another classroom to teach a lesson. It was very interesting, I did see a video of Ms. Kip saying about aloe plants, when she ran out of things to talk about, so. Must have been very interesting to be in one of those classes. And then we also had chalk at the courtyards, because it was a very nice day, so just to add a little color. And then tomorrow, we're having Community Appreciation Day, and so one of the things we're doing is we're doing a high-five contest on Twitter, which hopefully will be very interesting to see. And then we're also going to have a table at lunch, to kind of write letters to everyday superheroes, just to kind of show appreciation to someone you don't normally. And then we're also encouraging everyone to go to the JV and varsity boys volleyball games, just because we feel like that's a sport that's kind of underrated, and not many people go on to go and cheer them on, so we figured it'd be a nice change to kind of be like, we support you, you got it, guys. And then it's continuing on to Monday, which is Compliment Day. So we do, we do this every year, but we decided that it'd be good to kind of stick it into Dude Be Nice. So basically, throughout the week, we've kind of been tabling where people can for free just write a compliment to someone, and then on Monday, we're going to hand them out to the students with a piece of candy, so that'll be really fun. And then Tuesday is Gratitude Day, which is basically where we're just going to be doing some, you know, we're keeping them down low right now, but some cute little things for some of the staff that help out at the high school that aren't always appreciated, and so we're going to try to give back to them a little bit. And we're also going to be having thank you notes, kind of like the everyday superhero, but just kind of for anyone that, if you didn't get to write them for before, and that'll be the last day. So, it'll be really great, just kind of end, wrap up, kind of thank anyone who you hadn't thought of before, and just kind of, and with a happy note, so yeah.
And I think, at first, I think a lot of us were like, oh, be nice, like aren't we pretty nice already? But I will say-
I was going to ask that.
And that's kind of, it came off, you know what I mean? But it came off, I, there was chalk on the tables at lunch today, I started drawing with chalk, I was like, wow, this actually is like a good idea, and everybody started doing it, like everyone, and I was talking to people that I've never spoken to before, it was a really good idea, I was like really impressed with how far that went.
It was insane how full, like-
Maybe I'm just in high spirits, because of the time of year it is.
You made that clear.
But I was just really enjoying. And also, on top of your point about the second spirit week, the seniors are independently organizing next week their own spirit week, just for the last week, which is kind of awesome, which has never happened before, and is completely student-led, so I thought I'd mention that.
So what you're saying is, it's not Dude Be Nice, because there have been nice things happening, it's let's, dude, let's continue to be super nice, by doing these special things, that's great. Beautiful ideas.
Wicked nice.
Wicked nice, yeah, that's more culturally appropriate to our state.
That's really awesome.
It is.
It really, really is.
Can you make sure you tag me on Twitter with, with pictures and stuff?
Okay, yes.
So that I can like be putting it out all over North Andover?
No, that, people, people love it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Any questions for them?
It's awesome, thank you.
Thank you both so much for this, all year long, will you be able to come to the next one, or you?
I will.
Dude Be Nice, I'm out?
I don't know how much I'll have to report, but I can definitely be here.
Night before graduation, I think, is our last one.
Is it? Oh, maybe I'll have some to say. Yeah, the seventh of the week, yeah.
Is it the seventh of the week?
Seventh of the week.
Yes.
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 The sophomores are quite happy if you leave, so they can-
Thank you both very, very much.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. That's really cool.
I like that. We should do it here, at Central Office, or something.
To be nice to each other, Dr. Gilligan. Okay, and now we're on to our consent agenda, we have the minutes from the last meeting to approve. Unless people have any questions. So motion from Ms. Vitski Lynch, seconded by Ms. Picard, for the May 3rd, 2018 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Exciting, okay. I don't have a big chair's report, so I would like to move right on to Dr. Price.
Sure.
There we go. Correct, I don't have any report. It's been a very long, long week, yeah.
Dr. Gilligan, I turn the first part of the superintendent's report over to you.
Why, thank you for yielding a little bit of your time.
Whatever you need, Dr. Gilligan, it's trying to be nice.
I appreciate it. Just a quick announcement, this week, I want to thank the committee that worked so hard, we hired the Humanities Director to replace the new Assistant Superintendent, Lorraine Marks, his old job, and we were really fortunate to hire Ms. Kristin Ando. She's been an employee of the Lawrence Public Schools for 23 years, she went to College of Boston College, she has a few master's degrees in the CAGS, and she's pretty special. She'll be taking over for Lorraine, she has extensive experience with English learners, she's developed all the training modules for Merrimack College and Northeastern for the EL programming, and she's also done work with Harvard University on adult programming around English learners. So, in addition to that, she has extensive experience with implementation of humanities curriculum across a few different levels in Lawrence, from elementary to, you know, the middle. And she's currently the Principal of the Union Partnership School. Yes, yep, so it's a really unique piece, and some of you may know she was one of the finalists for Assistant Superintendent, and we're really lucky to have her in North Andover, I think she's going to be a really strong contributor to the team, and we're thrilled.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Price.
Of course, I also just want to acknowledge that the school budget was passed along with all the other relevant articles at town meeting on Tuesday, I want to thank the school committee. And for anyone watching, if you see us at school committee, we are signing diplomas, we're not writing each other notes, so, you know, people were wondering what we were doing, we are signing diplomas, so. And we do hand sign all, every student who graduates from North Andover, so we do it at that time. But town meeting was, and from, I think from our perspective, a real success and a support of the school, so. And now, we're really excited to announce a really significant grant that we just received, so we thought we would bring it in front of you, we don't have to approve it, because it's a grant, but I would ask Val and Carol Arkum to come forward, and Lisa, come forward and explain what happened, and how this happened, and what this means for our schools, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. We have Lisa McNeil, who's a second grade teacher at Thompson, so she was very instrumental in our process, and I want to acknowledge as well as Christopher Raymond, the principal there, at Kittredge, so it's, let me kind of step back a minute, but Lisa's here with us for the teacher perspective, and her students have been using the program. So, we have been working with Mass STEM Hub, they were very supportive of implementing Project Lead the Way, and we had a $5,000 grant from them last spring, and we just got a $10,000 grant to continue that process, so looking to move towards AP Computer Science, hopefully in the 20, do my math now, 2021 school year. So that has been really successful, and part of that partnership, I've been in connection with their Executive Director, who kind of sent me an email about this opportunity, where they were providing grant funding for a program called ST Math, and literally the letters ST, standing for Spatial Temporal. So Val and I have been aware of it, and kind of heard about it, when she was in Salem, they had investigated the program, I've heard it from a couple of different resources, and as you might remember, our Eureka Math Program has extremely strong, but one piece that it's lacking is a digital component. And so, we thought this was a good opportunity to investigate and see. And speaking to their Executive Director, she said, you know, I said, why ST Math? Why is this the one, you know, we've heard of it, it's pretty neat, and the most unique aspect is that it really has no words. And the way they approach learning math is through a game-based module, and it's all visuals. And so students really have to kind of figure out how to get this little penguin called Gigi across the screen, and do it all in visual models. So, you know, our typical textbooks have a lot of vocabulary, and a lot of words, and numbers, and some students just, you know, can run with that and do a great job. And we know our Eureka Math has, and the expectations in math have really risen, to have a lot of language-heavy information, which isn't always accessible to all our learners. So ST Math has removed all the math from it, and it's really is a game-based format, where students are figuring out and doing a lot of inquiry to get this little penguin across the screen, and if they get things wrong, it gives them some guidance, so it has some adaptability features to it. And, you know, if they get things wrong, it's really not detrimental, they, you know, try it again and keep going with it. So, had the opportunity to meet with the company Mind, and Mass STEM Hub, over at the Partham School Lawrence, and saw it in action with some first graders, and they were raving. So the grant itself, they are offering 25 new schools, who are not currently using ST Math, and then 30 schools that are, to expand their work. Really in a supportive model, so not only are they providing the licensers, but also training for teachers in the schools, to make sure that it's really successful. And their research studies have shown that this is a great kind of product to engage students, and for us, in terms of Eureka, it's a supplement. So we're still continuing with Eureka at all of our schools, K through 6, but this will provide some additional support for our students, who may be struggling with the language, you know, have any form of learning disabilities, are English language learners, and on top of that, it really gets at the higher achieving students, because they really need to grapple with math in a very new way. You know, some of them can have an equation, plug in and solve, and kind of go with it, and this is really pushing their thinking, because they're, they're, have some productive struggle and have to solve for that. So it really reaches all learners across the board, and we're using it with it. So three of our schools, Thompson applied, Kittredge chose to apply, and Sargent chose to apply. And we really didn't push all of our schools, because we were shocked to even get one, we were, couldn't be really excited to get one grant. And we, the emails came in, and we got all three.
Wow.
Which we are surprised, as I mentioned, only 25 schools across the entire state were getting it. And we had Jessica McKenzie, who's from Mind, come out and work with all of our teams on the grant writing process, and, you know, kept kind of pushing her, what are the chances, you know, one school will get it, three schools? And she's like, it's going to be highly likely, we really want to spread out across the state and get into as many schools as possible. So, we're thrilled that all three of our schools that applied received the grant, and hopeful that next year, we'll apply for additional grants and continue across all of our schools, but we're extremely excited.
Can you just say approximately how much the grant is?
So their estimate is that it's about $40,000, you know, over the course of the three years, because it's, like I mentioned, the training and the site licensers, we're just doing a little math, trying to remember what our figures were when we investigated. And it's about $10 a student per year, if you put kind of this lump sum upfront, or $26 a student per year, so some- Plus, it was like $2,600 a day for a PD, and this is like included, like the PD's included in this, so I think that was another big win for us, because we were seeing like, okay, we can do this, and be supported throughout the process, because the PD is included for the three years of the grant, as well as the licenses. And as Kara said, it's just, it's a complement to the Eureka Program, so it's not taking place of it, it's something that will support the kids in looking at math in a different way. Lisa actually shared a really nice example with us this morning, so that might be a good thing to share, about a student that was needing some challenge, because her class is actually doing a pilot right now, just to, we were looking into checking it out when we were meeting with the committees, and so, I don't know, do you want to share that?
We've got a 60-day trial, so my second grade class has been using it, first grade class, and a fourth grade class at Thompson, and it is, it's very interesting. One is a teacher to kind of just sit back and watch and see how they're progressing through different problems, because you're, you're not really supposed, it's supposed to be that progressive struggle for them, and just asking some basic guiding questions, but you're really not intervening, it's up to them to try to figure out what's going on, and how do they get Gigi, how do they even, you know, what are the directions for the puzzle? There aren't any directions, they have to just kind of move the cursor around and see what comes up, and kind of solve that, it that way. So, it's, it's a challenge for, like Kara said, for some of those usually quick finishing kids, that kind of just get some things, and now it's like, wait a minute, I have to take my time, and kind of look around, and see what else is going on. It's, yeah, I mean, it's really interesting, and it goes right with Eureka. They, Kara has talked to them, and they have already planned it out with, mapped it out with Eureka. So we were doing equal groups today in class with Eureka, and we're doing the same thing, one of the students was on the same thing in ST Math, and I was able to say, hey, you did this this morning, when you were doing, you know, your problems in Eureka today, remember how we did this? And he's like, oh, you know, and it just kind of made that connection for the visual piece, but it kind of goes both ways. I think the biggest component, or the whole thing is large, but that PD piece, and how to implement it, and having their support for the next three years, is huge for us.
And to build on what Lisa was saying about that Eureka alignment, because Kara and I have been looking around just at different digital resources, and seeing what else is out there to, to keep that current, but when we met with the grant team, so Kim Horton, But when we met with the grant team, so Kim Horton, one of the teachers, and Principal Cushing from Kittredge, and then Lisa and Principal Raymond from Thompson, and then Principal Leahy and Assistant Principal Loughlin and Joni Coleman from Sargent, we all met with Jessica from Mind Research, who would be the one that would be providing us with some of this PD and supporting us through the three years. And we asked her a lot of questions to make sure that this was something that would be a compliment and not be something that would be stressful and taking away from what we've been trying to implement with, with Eureka. So, that's when we found out like they already have a scope and sequence because many schools that are using ST Math are also using Eureka. And we got to ask her a lot of questions about initial implementation and how we would be supported throughout. So, we're hopeful.
Would you guys say it's about $40,000 each year in, in, across the three years? And as someone, just a quick side note, Ms. McNeil, thank you so much. I know you did a lot with the grant. But as someone who has a lot of colleagues across the state who have done some work with ST Math, literally when they said, we hope we could get one school to get it, Dr. Price and I were standing next to her desk and she's like, Sergeant got it. And we were like, yes. And about three minutes later, Thompson got it. We're like, no way. And then they're like, that has to be it in two minutes after that. You know, and I think the important thing is for people to know is this doesn't by no means replaces Eureka Math. This is, this is one of those nice to have things that supplement, much like we used to supplement our core program with Heads Up or Math Mates, you know, just for those additional pieces. But it's really, the principals and the teachers and Val and Kara did tremendous work. So, it's really like $120,000 in grants.
And they did it very quickly. The timeline that you had. Was weeks?
Yeah. And there was part one and then what, maybe two weeks to turn around and do part two. And then a week is. Luckily, they told us very quickly. It was a quick return.
So, there's, you know, just to think about the trajectory of math support in this district over the last four or five years. Without a math coach and a math and science coordinator at K-12, you never would have been able to do this. Because who are you going to have to write the grant, oversee this? So, it's exciting that kind of the, the investment in the two of you as positions, not just the two of you, actually really has dividends for this district. It's really exciting. And you're amazing, but yeah.
Can I ask two questions? So, just trying to guess what questions might come in. What happens year four?
We contentioned. We were actually just talking about looking at what it is. So, I think their model is we'd go to that 10 student a year. So, the nice thing is we have three years to start budgeting. I think they're also.
They also offer extension grants.
Offering extension grants and really looking to like get this going across the entire state. Jessica, who we mentioned, actually just moved up here from, we keep debating, we think Maryland, like they actually moved her up here. She's been with the company a number of years to run this whole program in Massachusetts. And they're hoping they can get into every school and support it and have a longstanding relationship because they are seeing the progress and the potential to really, you know, reach all learners and have another way to really deep, deepen the conceptual understanding. So, hopefully we'll continue to apply for grants or work very closely with Superintendent Gilligan to make sure we can support that.
$10 a student. Just to put it in perspective, the money that principals typically have to spend when we have to buy consumables for spelling, grammar, $10 is very reasonable.
And it would obviously fall within the Medicaid funding.
Right, right, which is wonderful. And then the other question is, okay, well, gosh, my kid's at Atkinson. How come they didn't get to have it? Why, who dropped the ball? Like that, those are the questions that will come next.
It was a time crunch. So, it was who has some time to write really quickly, you know, with some support. We kind of threw out some ideas. Their model was really, and actually Val and I tried to like, can we just submit it for every school? You know, we'll, you know, get some time in our schedules. And they wanted the principals to really be involved to make sure that this is going to work. And, you know, like I said, Jessica came in and mapped with every principal and kind of our teacher champion to make sure that this was going to be effective and not just throw the money. And then, you know, with a lot of programs, you might purchase it and without that support and a real true plan, you know, it goes by the wayside, other things come along. So, I think we're.
So, those were ready to go forward?
Yes. And that was another piece too of making sure and, you know, through the grant process, it was making sure that the technology was accessible. So, even in each school, it's going to look a little different. Lisa mentioned at Thompson, they're starting in first, second and fourth grade. Those were the, the teams that felt like they were ready and had the access technology. Kittredge, being a smaller school, have decided that they're going to use it in all grades, one through five, but slightly different models. The upper grades have kind of more access to the Chromebooks during the day. So, they'll probably do it all at a time where the first and second grades on the same hallway will kind of share a cart and do it maybe in a bit of a center rotation and kind of manipulate their time a little bit differently with the Chromebooks. At Sargent, it'll be first, second and third grade. They felt like they've had, they were a school that kind of jumped onto Eureka a little bit earlier, as was Thompson. So, they felt like they have a little more experience with Eureka and can see how to coordinate that in. So, I think the other two schools, Atkinson and Franklin too, had more, they were in the test phase with more teachers using Go Math or the HMH. So, even another year of Eureka under their belt, I think will, will help support that implementation. And again, hopefully expanding the grant opportunities there. And then we did have the conversation with Judy Rogers and Mary Lou Connors about the ABECC or whatever. Keep joking, what, what is that nickname going to be? It doesn't roll off the tongue so well. And even, you know, is it right for kindergarten yet? And, and we said, you know, with next year being a brand new, coming together of early childhood and the kindergarten teachers, we said, let's wait. But they're excited about that opportunity moving forward. And actually through, my, my four-year-old was playing with it yesterday in the demo mode and they have a pre-K version too. So, and she was having a lot of fun and had to turn off the computer to get her to bed. So, there is some potential even to go with our, our pre-K students. So, it's exciting.
Can you say then what ST stands for?
Spatial Temporal. Yeah. So, it's a very neuroscience-based, kind of research-based. There's a great TED Talk. That of the founder, you know, ST Math TED Talk. It'll come up in about eight minutes. And he just goes into the why. And he himself had dyslexia, always struggled learning math and, you know, wanted to find some ways to make it accessible without other language barriers.
And next year, there'll be the opportunity to apply for new implementation grants for the other schools as well.
So, they're hoping to expand. This year was 25 new schools. They're hoping maybe even to double that. So, just to kind of continue to grow. So, hopefully our chances, you know, now that they're already, already working with us and partnered with us, that'll be hopefully a smooth process to get our additional schools.
Thank you for the excellent answers.
That's fantastic.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much. That's really, we're very fortunate. Thank you for all your hard work.
That's it for me.
That's wonderful. Thank you. School building committee has things to update. It's busy over there. Looking pretty good.
Very busy. Hard to believe that in, in three months, this project's going to be done. Today's May 17th. We're supposed to have this thing done by August 20th. And I know from the outside looking in, you can't see it, but this weekend, some of us are going down to Lancaster, Pennsylvania to see these modulars in production. So, I think it'll become a lot more real then. But we're on time still, obviously. We're, we're under budget, under budget still.
Don't brag about that.
So, yeah, no, it goes pretty well. And again, just a, a big thanks to the patience of the, the parents up there, dealing with the different traffic patterns and dealing with the, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a busy site. So, everyone's working hard together to get this done. But yeah, I can't believe it's really coming together.
We promised to send pictures of the modulars once we're down there and in them, walking around. It'll be fun.
And again, that blog is, is really, really good.
Mary Lou's blog is amazing.
So, if people haven't had a chance to look at that and you're curious what's going on beside, behind the little special fence that you can't see through really, that shows it really nicely.
She does an excellent job.
Thank you, Mary Lou, for that.
No, we have, we have a great team and we definitely couldn't do it with the people on the ground there. And Mary Lou's a big part of that. No question about it.
Fantastic. Any questions? Okay, then we can move on to our old business, starting with the second reading of the student handbook, which we all have. And I handed out by mistake for the wrong reasons.
So, I think the one piece you guys had asked us to do, we did have a conversation with the PTO co-presidents this morning. Mr. Gilligan, would you mind talking a little bit about that?
Yeah. So, with the PTO co-presidents, we went over some of the changes in the handbook and the process of changes, really highlighting the work with some big thanks to Town Council, Suzanne Egan, the committee that worked a couple, you know, two years ago to have one handbook. So, that there's consistent language and nomenclature for kids across all levels. Although, as we discussed this morning, you know, consequences and outcomes in that rights and responsibilities section may look a little different for a kindergartner versus a ninth grader. Maybe. And so, we went through that. And one of the suggestions that they had, we discussed here at school committee last time, was Chair Mably pointed out that, because some of the parents asked, it may be nice just in this first year to keep the changes highlighted.
Or even for just a few months or something.
Yeah. In the beginning, when the parents have to sign off that they've read the copy, just so that everyone's aware of those new changes. And I think we had a really productive discussion about it. Particularly vaping and a few other things came up and really put some more teeth in the consequences around some of the things as we have to, you know, changes as issues change over time. So.
I actually also went to the PAC meeting last night and Mr. Jackson talked a little bit about this as well. And people were happy to hear about the additions to our hot topic. We've had this last few weeks about vaping. So, thank you. Any other questions or comments about the handbook? We have to get this nailed down by the 30th of May. So, today would be the day.
We'd appreciate it.
Motion to approve the 2018, 2019 Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook as presented.
Motion by Mr. Trissey, second by Ms. Witsky Lynch. Can we just do all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good. Thank you. Thank you for this. This is, again, people were very happy. If they hadn't noticed before, that this is, is across the district, one handbook. So.
Title of that, the Rights and Responsibilities.
We might have stolen that from a district that I used to work in.
It's education we share.
Yeah, that's right. We borrowed. I, I like the concept too, because it is really about rights and responsibilities.
Yes. That's nice. Good. So, if you all wouldn't mind, we want to rearrange the agenda a little bit to jump and pull up new business. So, 10B, the Lucy Cawkins reading presentation. So, Ms. Marks and our team can enjoy that before we have to go through all the other things. You can thank Dr. Price. She just made a little motion over here.
Just to introduce Ms. Marks and the team, Ms. Joyce and Ms. Mullane. As part of our five-year curriculum plan, as you guys have seen and the folks across the district have seen, reading was next up. And we'll discuss reading and the plan for kindergarten next year. And these guys are going to talk in more detail about what that rollout looks, rollout looks like beyond kindergarten.
And just to be very clear, so we, we've had this conversation previously to school committee. It really is, you know, decisions around curriculum, it's, it's not as clear of who makes that decision. We can have lots of conversations, but in the past, over the last time, since I've been here, once we've said we're going to do a curriculum, we've asked for the school committee to just support that, just a vote of support. I think that's been really helpful as we're really united in our consistent rigorous curriculum. You know, the curriculum decisions really do lie with the educational experts. But it has been nice that we've worked collaboratively around this. Just so what we're looking for is some acknowledgement of support. Because this will be our next, this is our Eureka Math of next year.
We're keeping those teachers very busy. Lots going on. So, the reading units of study, there's a picture up there of a, of a kit, which many of you were here and saw the writing kits, had the teachers, we had teachers a couple of years ago come and bring some of the work they had done. We did the classroom visit last year. So, the kits are very similar in the reading. So, in K through two, you have four units. One unit is foundational reading skills and the other three split between fiction and informational reading. In grades three through five, you have four units as well, two fiction, two information. Like the writing kits, there's Pathways book, which gives you all kinds of information about the progressions and the structure of the units. There's a user guide. Anne and I just finished doing three weeks of study groups. So, voluntarily, teachers who were interested, we picked particular chapters out of the user guide. Fabulous, fabulous information. I was reading them again over vacation and Anne was on vacation in Hilton Head. And I had to stop myself from calling her because I needed to talk to somebody about some of the things I was reading. And we found the same excitement with the teachers here. So, we had sent out a couple of emails, had people register and both, the K through two group was on a Monday afternoon, after school. Three through five was Tuesday. Both times, we had more people than we even anticipated signing up. So, Mr. Gilligan and I are meeting tomorrow morning and the budget that I gave him for reading kits has changed dramatically. So, following these PD sessions and the kinds of emails and feedback that we have gotten, like teachers came up to us the first, after the first Monday and just said, it was so exciting and invigorating to be talking about reading instruction again and to be part of those conversations. So, really, and that was based on the user guide that is in each of these kits. So, they differ a little based on the level of reading, the K through two or the three through five, but both have really, really great information. One of the things that's also included in that user guide is the structure of the mini lesson, which fortunately for us is not going to be a big change because teachers have been doing that mini lesson for the writing as well. Some of the pieces are a little bit different, like the partner work in writing differs from the kind of partner work you do in reading. So, we'll talk about some of those kinds of things. But that's basically what the kit looks like. And then you can see the sticky notes. There are anchor charts. There are online resources with checklists and student exemplars. And again, anchor chart examples, all kinds of resources to help support the teachers as well. Again, the big piece with the reading units of study, just like the writing units, units of study, is the workshop model where you have a very concrete, specific teaching point. You have a mini lesson where the kids, the teacher is teaching that. There's some active engagement where students are practicing that with guided instruction from the teacher. And then you have a large period of time that's independent practice and there's choice there. So, one of the things that we talk to the teachers a lot about is less teacher talk, which is hard for us. It's hard for me. As a teacher, I thought the more I talked, the more they were going to get it, which is not really how it works. But it's a hard, it's a hard habit to break. But kids practicing, Anne uses her analogy, you were at golf lesson last night, right? Her analogy of a golf lesson, like you don't learn to become a better golfer by having the coach talk to you all the time. You learn to be a better golfer by getting the club in your hand and hitting the golf ball. So, and that's the same kind of thing with the reading and writing. So, the, the reading workshop is, functions similarly. So, you have a large piece there of student practice, time, eyes on print, actually reading books. And I know I've said this before, but the number of books that kids need to be reading is tremendous. Like in kindergarten, you're looking at 10 to 12 books a week that they should be reading. And the number goes down a little from there because the books become longer and more complex, not because they should be reading less books. So, that happens during that time. And during that time, we're really focusing on choice. So, we're trying to give kids books that they're interested in. They get to pick out some books. So, it's not like when I was in school and they told you what you had to read and everybody was reading the same book. Kids have choice during this time. And they also are, hopefully, we're, we're doing our best to provide high quality and high interest literature for kids to read during that time. So, that's a little bit about the reading units. Let me see if there's anything else I wanted to say there. Oh, the other important thing I wanted to say is just around the pedagogy again. I talked about less teacher talk, but that very strategic teaching point, using, having kids talk to one another. So, the partner talk, the turn and talk, practices that are wrapped into these units, both the reading and writing, that are really changing our teachers' teaching style, which is important as well. So, just as an example, we have provided, as I mentioned, the study groups. And out of those study groups, we have more teachers who are interested in trying the units next year. We have also, I think I skipped one. Yeah, I'll, I'll just talk this one, then I'll go backwards. I think I must have hit it twice. We have run a Tuesday morning PD group. So, for, we had the two lab classrooms, Lisa Mullane and Nicole Radoski, who you met at the school committee. We had some other teachers who wanted to try the units. And although they weren't going to be lab classrooms, we felt that we would let them run with that. And on Tuesday mornings, once a month, those teachers came voluntarily before school started and we would talk about different types of things, either problems or things that we've learned, strategies that have been helpful. So, that group ran as well. We did February, March and April, we ran a kind of a PD trilogy. So, we did some PD planning around how to get through the units and plan effectively with your team in a time-efficient manner. So, those were very well attended. In, in March, we did in Lisa's room, a Q and A for any teachers who wanted to come to hear what it was like to be in a lab classroom. What does this really mean? How does that differ? And that was very well attended and we had a lot of questions out of that. And then from that, some of the teachers who were not kindergarten teachers, our second and third grade teachers, actually went to Nicole's classroom in April and spent some time specifically in there asking more questions. And a lot of those teachers then came to our study groups on the Monday or Tuesday. We do have the Homegrown Institute. It's our first reading institute here in North Andover, which will be the week of July 16th. And we have a staff developer, they call them, from Teachers College at Columbia coming out that week. We have a waitlist for that class. So, and I usually try to sneak a couple of extra people in. Like I usually don't count myself. I kind of roam in the back for the whole time. But they sent some, some new literature, which I'm, I'm worried they're going to be a little stricter. So, we might have to stick to the number they gave us. But we have that going. And we, as I said, we have people that couldn't get in who are interested in going. So, if somebody is, something happens and they're not able to come, we certainly will, that will still be more than full. So, and then we're also looking for arcade teachers to do before the year is out, a shared reading and an interactive read aloud PD. And we have some books that they're. And we have some books that they're going to get, that the Ed Foundation donated, and they will have lessons prepared and be ready to roll, because that will be the expectation for all kindergarten teachers next year, that they are doing shared reading and interactive read aloud. In terms of the rollout for, let me see if that goes back here, I'll go to that one in a minute. In terms of the rollout, we have a soft rollout in kindergarten. So what that means is the kindergarten teachers have had so many changes, including this major move. They've had foundations come in, they've had the Eureka Math, they had the Writing Units of Study. So for those teachers who felt that they wanted to take on either fully the Reading Units of Study or partially, they will be doing that next year, and then the following year, it will become all kindergarten teachers. So I just updated these numbers from where, what the slide originally gave Bev. So we have at least 80%, probably a little more of the kindergarten teachers at full or partial implementation for next year, which is pretty impressive, because they, they are brave people, they have a lot on their plates.
So I just want to be very clear with this. So Laureen and I and Dr. Gilligan had a long conversation a few months ago to say, do we just say to folks, like, "You have to do this?" And we felt really strongly that given the Lucy Cawkins writing, the Eureka Math, the change in kindergarten, we have moved at a pretty strong pace here in this district, sort of frankly stunning pace. Just ask Anne Joyce.
Or Lisa.
And so one of the things we said is, like, "Let's give people choice for next year." And knowing that we could not fully fund with both the kits, we believe we can do, but also the library. So how do we do this? And we made a decision to give people choice, and I have to say, looking at these percentages, I'm stunned, right? So these are folks who have opted in, and you know, when you make these decisions and people feel like they opt in, I actually think you increase ownership than saying, "Everybody's going to do this." So this year with math, we felt like with the math curriculum, we needed to go all in in one year, and it was going to be tricky and challenging, and if you remember in the fall, everybody was kind of like, "What are we doing?" This way, we just decided to take a different tact, and it wasn't at all anything about, kind of, other than strategic. Saying, we have asked our teachers a lot, and really exciting to see how many have said, "I'm in."
It's really, it's really exciting. I sent an email today saying, "Had a last call on the kits," and I've been getting emails even up to this evening, and I'm sure there'll be more there. So grade one, we have at least 73% right now, grade two, it looks like we have 100%. Grade three, 71%, grade four, 70%, and grade five, 40%. And I'm actually okay with that at this point, because we want to be able to support these teachers, and we're going to move up K 1, 2, 3, so as they move up the grades, all kids are going to understand the strategies. They'll, you know, they'll be coming through school, reading the quantity and the volume, and using the language, and talking and thinking about reading. That is going to be a little bit of a change from what many of them are doing now. And I just, I shared with Anne an email I got this evening from a teacher who'd been attending the PD that we just did. And she said, "I'm not sure I'm ready to take the full leap, but I want you to know, I tried the strategy." And she said, "The excitement and the level of discussion in my classroom was amazing." And so, I mean, just those kind of things that are coming to us are really, really wonderful. And, you know, I'm, I believe that teachers need to be able to have that choice, and to be able to move at a pace that they can handle in order for it to succeed. And we don't want this to fail, we believe so strongly in this, and we see the value of this. And it's great to have teachers be able to discover that at their own pace as well. So, so that's, that's where we are, so Mr. Gilligan, we're going to be having a little bit of a different discussion tomorrow morning, so. Yep, so that's good, and I'm just going to take you.
Town meeting increased the Medicaid reimbursement from $250 to $400,000.
Oh, hallelujah.
Up two.
Up two, but it helped.
Do you anticipate in the next couple of years that everybody will have to do it, or will it always be a choice?
Oh, no, it will become what the district is using, but because we cannot, I mean, there's only a few of us. In order to really provide the proper modeling and PD and support for the teachers, so that they can feel successful to take this on, and also to support the principals, this is new for the principals. So as they look, go on walkthroughs through classrooms, how to support them, you know, one of the principals and I walked through the school to look at writing, and we talked about it as we left the different classrooms. So they, they need that support too, because this is new for them. We've done some training around writing, we've done some training around foundations with them. We have not done any reading training with them yet, because we, obviously, we haven't really rolled this out officially yet. So, but that's another important piece, they can't support the teachers in their school or, or look at accountability until they know what they're actually looking for, so.
And then is there at least every school represented in the grades?
Yes, yes, every school.
So like, grade one, there's at least, there's one classroom of every school?
All five schools are represented in all six of those grades, yes, yes. Which has also been really, really great to see. There, we were, there were some unexpected teachers who came to our study groups from schools that we thought maybe were going to, you know, stay with what they, they knew at this point. The quote that I just gave you was from a teacher from one of those schools, so it's, it's been really, really exciting, really exciting for us. So, I'm going to take you backwards, I believe, if I'm doing this right, for, oop, that was my problem, I zipped over that.
Is there an incentive for the?
Teachers to volunteer to do this, like was there something in addition that they would get besides having access to this new stuff?
The only people who had any incentive would have been the lab classroom teachers, in that they had a coach to co-teach with them a couple of times a week and co-plan, yes. And, but that was also beneficial to us as well, because the coaches really got in there, felt what those units looked like, felt what those lessons looked like. We've had teachers come and observe in the last lab classrooms, and one of the times, Anne came to me and said, "Oh, my God, Laureen, it was the first day of this new thing in kindergarten, I'm sure you remember," and they had some teachers in there. And she said, "It looked, it looked rough." And I said, "That's okay, because it's going to look rough sometimes, that's what's going to happen." And we all learn and we all progress through rough times, we don't progress through the easy times. And I said, "Invite them back in a week, or invite them back, send a video of what that actually looks like, once the kids are into it." And I don't think it was more than two days that she came to me and she showed me videos. She's like, "You've got to come down here and look at what's happening," you know, so, but the rough times are okay. And that's what we try to say to the teachers too, it's okay. I fail at lessons, people fail, things don't go exactly as you want, it's going to feel rough sometimes, but you stick with it. Just like we teach the kids, that grit, that perseverance, we have to do the same thing, so. And this is the slide that I skipped over, which I won't go into great detail, but I just wanted to kind of share with you, like, in the kits, for example, you're working on skill of character development in reading. So they're different, it progresses through the grades, so like in kindergarten, you might be just noticing that characters have feelings. And in first grade, you might be noticing, let me just make sure I'm getting these all right, bringing characters to life with their feelings. In second grade, how does a character respond to problems? In third grade, you may look at how the character behaves and develop those traits and theories about what they might be thinking or feeling. In fourth grade, you look at how characters' actions may have deeper meanings. And in fifth grade, what is the motivation and the conflict that's created in the character? So, and that, that's one example of character development, but there can be theme, there can be other kinds of things that move through all of those units, and you see that progression through the grades. So, and those are some of the nifty anchor charts they show you. We actually had a part of a PD that we did on partner talk during one of our January PDs, the Ed Camp. And we did a little piece on how to draw those people for your anchor charts. Because that can be threatening to people too, like, "I don't know how to draw those, I don't want to have to do that." So, so I talked about the lab teachers, and I am going to now turn this over to Anne, who was one of the teachers and, or the coaches in the lab classroom. And she's going to give you a little information on, just sharing some data and growth about those classrooms.
So as Lauree mentioned, there's tremendous excitement around this program. And I, as she mentioned, I came out of a lesson, because we were doing the first lesson in kindergarten around playdates. And playdates are essentially kindergarten speak for group work. And so we were teaching the kids how to do playdates, and it was a new concept, so it was really a challenge for them. But you have to look at that picture on the left, and this is one of the playdates where they are playing school. And you'll see the little girl in the pink shirt, and she is actually doing a book talk and shared reading with her students. And so we're teaching the skills to the kids, they can then practice them and teach them with their pairs. And so this is how we're teaching them to work together in partners and in larger groups, which then transitions into second grade. The picture on the right shows a group of kids in a nonfiction book club. So they had to take a piece of nonfiction, read it for main ideas and details, and then come to the group, explain to them what their book is about, what the main idea and what the details are. So we're really teaching kids not just to read, but to be thoughtful partners, to collaborate with one another, and to grow their ideas around their books, based on the conversations that they're having with other children. And so these pictures, look at the children, they're totally engaged in what they're doing, they're respectful to one another, and most of all, they're supporting one another in their reading growth. So it's just so exciting to watch it in action, and as Lauree mentioned, it really is a process. Like, we can't have kids having these productive conversations around reading unless we teach them how to do it. And they need multiple opportunities to practice at the grade level, and with appropriate skills. So we call it a playdate in kindergarten, we call it a book club in second grade. And then eventually, by fourth and fifth grade, they don't need all of the supports that we're giving them, they're just having those conversations more naturally on their own, so it's really exciting work. But to go along with all this excitement, we say, "Well, what does the data really show? Are our kids really reading? Are they really progressing?" And I think that is the most exciting part that we have to share tonight. Our kids are making tremendous growth with the work that we're doing. If you take a look at the data on the left, that data represents one of the assessments that's given to kindergarten students at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the ending, end of the year. It's called hearing and recording sounds, and essentially, a sentence is dictated to the students, it's repeated slowly, and students are asked to write the sentence. So they're trying to map the letters to the sounds that they hear in words. And many of our kids started out having some of these important early literacy skills, but all of them have made tremendous growth. And when we prepared this chart, it actually had the middle of the year data, but many of the kids have already gotten up to about 37 sounds. That's the total amount of sounds that they can hear in a sentence, and almost everyone in the class has reached that benchmark at this point in the year, so.
This is from Lisa's classroom?
From Lisa's classroom, the lab classroom. So that in itself is exciting growth. And then when we move over to the second data point, which is the running records. And a running record is simply when a student is asked to read a certain text, and the texts are leveled based on the features of the text. So let's say, if you have a Level A book, that's really just teaching kids concepts of print. And when I say concepts of print, it means do they know how to open the book and start at the beginning of the book? Do they know how to turn the page and make sure that reading each page, do they know how to point to each word on the page? And if there are two lines of print, do they know to go down to the next line of print? So it's really very basic skills. And then, they might then go on to a Level C book, where they're going to now have maybe longer sentences, but they're going to be asked to use the picture to be able to support the word on the page. They might use the first sound in the picture to be able to identify what the word is. And so those are really a lot of the skills that we're working on in kindergarten. And if you look at the students represented here, and they're just a basic representation of the class, we had kids coming in at Level A, which is where they should be, concepts of print beginning. But most of them have either gone up two levels, or even, I think she's five levels that she's gone up. So their reading behaviors are growing throughout the course of the year. And most, two of those kids are really approaching the end of kindergarten benchmarks, and one is already above the kindergarten benchmark. So it's really exciting to see the kids using the reading behaviors that we're teaching them during the mini lessons, and that they're practicing during the independent reading, so. That's phenomenal data from our kindergarten class.
And I just want to add here, these are just snapshots of three different types of students. So one is a student who needed intervention, another is a student who's sort of a typically advancing student, and the other was a student who required a little enrichment. So just to kind of give you an idea that there are three types of students, and yet you see fabulous growth in each case, so.
With parents.
The hearing and recording sounds, I do send home in a memory book. I don't put my score sheet, but I love for them to see beginning, middle, and end.
Right.
Sometimes, sometimes getting them to do the hearing and recording sounds in September is tricky, because they're just coming in. But I'd like to do it in a very positive way, if they're struggling, I just continue, because the winter growth and the, and the final growth in the spring is incredible. And one year I didn't do the fall, and I regret it, because when you look at the winter, you say, "Oh, that looks great." But to see that growth throughout the entire year is incredible.
Thanks.
And then we have some data from our second grade. And again, we have different representations of students, similar to what Lauree said. If you look at student A, this was a student that came in late to the year and really didn't have mastery of the English language, he was an English language learner. So he came in, really had, we had to start with concepts of print with him, and he has already moved up three levels. And the best part about that student that isn't even reflected in this data point is, his teacher Nicole shared with me the other day that we were doing nonfiction, and she had pointed out in the book about shocks, how shocks were dangerous. During his independent reading time, he was actually reading a book on RAS kids, and the word "dangerous" came up, and he ran across the room to say, "Oh, my goodness, my book has 'dangerous,'" and it just like you were talking about. So here's a student who didn't even have command of the English language, making connections across texts. So that was phenomenal to see. The second data point shows another student who received some extra reading support, and has shown tremendous growth. She started out with really some, some struggles around reading, just really thinking about fluency, and thinking about the storyline and the characters. And she's already up to books where she is thinking about the story structure and character traits. So there's tremendous growth in, in her reading, and she was a student that just, I did the running record with her, and the effort, she kept persevering, again, she knew that something didn't sound right, and she kept on trying, and she would not move past that sentence until she got it right. And then she said, "Oh, I was reading it in the wrong voice." So for kids to be able to acknowledge their own reading behaviors and recognize what they were doing and what they needed to do in order to fix that is just phenomenal. And then our last student, who has also made some tremendous growth, started out really having a solid command of second grade skills, but has now moved on to holding on to multiple problems across the story, and really more intense characters with more intense motivations and traits. So, you know, you see this data here, but, you know, I know the story of each student and the growth, and to see their progress, it's just, it's been phenomenal to watch. So I, I'm so thankful that I've had this opportunity this year to work in the lab classrooms, and to see the kids, and to see the growth that they've made, having choice around their reading, and really having that practice and coaching as they read. So it's, it's been a phenomenal year, it's been really exciting.
And you see us using running records here. Not all teachers with the current reading program that has been in use in North Andover, they were not using running records. Running records gives you text levels, it talks about reading behaviors. So one of the things that we are going to be doing with all kindergarten teachers next year too, is training, providing them a running records kit, and training them in administering the running records. And the coaches have put together the kinds, they're called the bands of text complexity, so what you find in an A level, how do you teach into that, what do you know, all the way up to the, you know, W, X, Y, Z levels, so when kids are in upper, upper grades. And in fact, we have shared that with some of the middle school and high school teachers as well, in terms of conferring with students around independent reading. So although you see running records here, when Lisa was talking about what she sends home, that, that's not something that goes home, because it's not a standard practice in all of our classes at this point. So, because I don't know if that helps answer some of those questions.
Can you guys talk a little bit about how foundations plays into this? Because I think, you know, we've talked, we adopted that two years ago, and just so that folks understand that this is a both and, it's kind of like ST math, right?
That's right, no, it's, it's so true. Foundations is the critical underlying foundation of reading, you need to know how the letters and sounds work. And so during foundations, they're systematically taught the phonics principles, but then when they go into their independent reading time, and they come across a word, we then refer back to what they have been taught in the morning. So like, even today, we had the word thirsty, and they've done the digraph TH. So we thought about, okay, what does the TH sound make? And then we also thought about the meaning of the story and what would make sense. So they have that foundation from foundations, learning the letters and sounds, and then as they come across different concepts, we're constantly pointing those out, blends, CBC words, things like that. So it, it's a critical connection, so we're so grateful to have that in place as well.
It really works nicely with the program, I do it about 30 minutes a day. And, I mean, it is very systematic, it starts out, letters, sounds. It starts out with lowercase, because that's what you're going to see. It starts out with lowercase because that's what you're going to see is the lowercase letters in the book. And there's a, there's a letter, there's a picture, and there's a sound. So it's A, apple, eh. We do it, it's a little bit of a skill and drill, but we make it fun. They then will move into, we introduce some snap words, which is great for foundations and the reading program. And right now, we are doing sentence structure. So it just, it just really takes them from the very basic letters and sounds. Then they're tapping them, they're putting them together to make words. I mean, even today, I had a little boy doing his hearing and recording sounds. And he was, he was writing a word, I think it was red. He's r, eh, d, red. And he was using all those skills. So it really does complement the reading and the writing nicely.
And Jen may have been asking because we shared scores from Lisa's class with Jen just prior to the meeting and it was pretty impressive. So when you're looking at the students who are maybe going to need reading intervention or may have been referred for special education services, we're going to see, there's going to be a huge decrease. I mean, it doesn't really look like it, with a quick glance, it just numbers, which is not the only thing one should be looking at. But those students have made tremendous progress, so we're not looking at a high need class there.
Right.
So it's really very, very encouraging.
Even the kids who came in reading and writing and got thirty-seven on thirty-seven in September, they've developed, their score didn't change, but they might have written have is H A V. And now they know it's H A V E. Because they only get credit for the H A V, just for the sounds they hear. So they, you know, just all those different things, I think, C, they get credit for S E. But now they're writing S E E. So even if they came in high, you can see their progress throughout the year as well. I think it's a great tool.
And Nicole could not be here tonight, but I do want to take a minute just to thank Lisa and Nicole once again and Anne and Jackie, who just returned this week, part-time from her maternity leave. Anne and Jackie, the coaches who went in and did the co-teaching and co-planning with Lisa and Nicole was quite a project this year and they have done a phenomenal job. So I just want to acknowledge that.
You had asked about incentive earlier.
It's been fabulous.
I said, I'm only joining if I can do it with Anne or Jackie. Well, I knew it was, you know, if we did decide to adopt it, I thought, well, why not take advantage of a coach? So this would be good.
And just so that everyone else is clear, currently, I mean, what has been the standard practice in the district is reading street, which is a very different approach, you know? Is pick stories for kids, put in a tape or a C D and it's very, I don't know how else to describe it.
It's excerpts, not books.
Yeah, excerpts from books. So this is a very different approach to reading. It's almost a one-eighty, is that?
I think so.
Yeah.
But it's in line really important with the writing.
Yes.
Because they're both so integral parts. But I would just say this much, the amount of implementation and change for teachers and the work that they have done around writing, around math, and now reading, it's just amazing. The enthusiasm that we have with our teachers and their ability to do these things because even though we're being thoughtful, deliberate, and we have a really good plan, it's a lot of work. So thank you.
It definitely pays off. I had a little girl who was coming in as a struggling reader, but in her reading bag, she had a book called A Monster Sandwich. And she made the connection between the reading and writing. We're doing how-to writing. And she said, Mrs. Mullane, this, this book is a how-to book. Can you read it during writer's workshop? And I'm like, yes, I can. So it's, the connections they're making are incredible.
And just to echo what Greg said, we have a lot of fabulous teachers in the district. And much of the P D that I mentioned was voluntary P D. The teachers came to on their own time. I mean, I was talking to a friend of mine and they're like, you have teachers that show up voluntarily at seven o'clock in the morning to talk about reading? I'm like, yeah, we do, you know? And the teachers that came to these study groups in the afternoon, like, they had to read a number of pages in preparation to come to the study group to have these conversations each week. And I just think that that says, speaks volumes about the teachers in this district, so.
Thank you. Thank you. I do agree that voluntary participation says volumes. And obviously, you're setting up reasons for them to want to participate. So thank you for that, too. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Let's see. I feel like I'm going to be like Mr. DeSalvo, but if we can, I want to pair up. The old business C goes with the new business C. Because the changes that we're putting in the new business toward the administering medications came out of discussions about that alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use policy. So if we could do those two and then do Dr. Price's evaluation, is that all right with everyone? Okay. So the policy J I C H was the one that we were trying to wrap up last time, but it just wasn't in our packet. So I don't know if we have any further questions or discussions about that, but it is here.
I think it's the final version, basically how we left it three or four weeks ago. We were trying to amend it, but we decided just to keep it as is.
And also, where the key amendment comes is the new policy, which is the form that people have to fill out for medication. So if you want to look at that first, we can.
What's such a better, we don't know. I know.
So in looking at all this, there was, there's a form that was currently linked to in our policies, our school committee policies, that had a sentence that basically said, I, you know, give permission to the nurse to administer this medication, you know, Amy Maybley. And that was it. But it turns out that this form is what Cheryl Barzak has in the whole medical packet and site that she had. So this makes much more sense. It's much more thorough to be part of our school policies for what the form is to fill out should you, your child need to have medication administered at school. So, and I thought that for J I C H, one of the key things was the fact that how do, how do you, if somebody needs to take medical marijuana, what have you, how do you make that clear? And that was, updating this form would hopefully take care of that. The health advisory committee meeting that was yesterday. I do know at prior meetings, the nurses had expressed that they were not allowed to administer cannabis under their license and by federal law. So I just want to make sure that we're not asking our nurses to do anything that's contrary to their licensure and to what they're expected to at the state level.
We've been very clear that they are not permitted to do that. So, you know, we can't make a policy that asks them to do something different under their license. So as of now, they are not permitted to administer medical marijuana.
Thank you.
Under their law, under their license.
So they can't fill this out. So basically, if a student has medical marijuana as something that is part of their, they have to do it prior to school. And the policy really actually is that, the ideal is nothing is ever administered at school. This is in the case where you absolutely have to, this is what you fill out. Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Picard. So, yes, so here's.
So that's the press reading of that.
Of that form. And again, it's just basically to take what Cheryl Barzak has in place already and take what is very skimpy in our current policy and make it much more robust. So if you, you can take a look at that. But then, so that's, looking at that.
And another question, will these forms be available for families like online?
That's where, mhm.
All of, we've moved all of this to an online platform. We did that last year.
Okay. And that's where this was. And so I think Bev had sent this to me because she had talked to Cheryl Barzak. And I said, oh, I'm looking at the school committee policy and it's this little tiny one sentence. I'd rather have this.
Yeah, just as a parent, I would want to make sure I had this.
That's right.
When I got to the doctor's office.
That's right.
And, I mean, the doctors in town, well, you know, they'll get with the program on this. They'll have it available when they're working with kids.
Good. So we're going to vote on J I C H.
I'll make the motion to approve policy J I C H, alcohol, tobacco, and other drug used by students prohibited as presented in the packet.
So that's a motion by Mr. Trissey, second by Ms. Witsky Lynch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. I will remember J I C H for a very long time. Okay, so, great. So now we have our final evaluation of Dr. Price. And I just want to note that obviously, Mr. McDevitt could not be here today for, his work took him out of state. And so he will have his comments to share when he comes back. But the rest of us are here and evaluation's here. I don't know if anyone wants to say anything, but I personally think that the whole process of tying the goals to the strategic plan and using that as a measure is very sensible. And that's what you're driving toward. And so thank you for, for doing all that.
It's been an evolution since I've been on the board. You know, we used to have superintendent goals, we used to have school committee goals. And I'm glad that we're kind of all under one roof now. It just seems to make a lot more sense now about how we're doing the evaluations and measuring our progress through these goals. Are we going to get into the weeds on this?
We can if people want to get into the weeds. I mean, it's all on here, it's all live. But the key thing is, Dr. Price has met or exceeded most of these things. And then just in terms of decreasing class size, we are not at zero. So it's hard to say you achieve or exceed that. But if, again, take that chart where you're at fifty-two and down to seventeen to fifteen percent, that's pretty impressive.
I wanted to comment on that because most of my grades, so to speak, were all met or exceeded except this one where I put significant progress. And I just know it's something that, you know, personally, I've been working on a lot and I know Jen has as well. And maybe it's her, it's her lowest grade, what I gave her. But it is impressive, it's the most impressive out of all because we've come such a long way in a few years. So I'm proud of what we're doing and I know under Dr. Gilligan's leadership going forward, we're going to, we're going to get there. We're going to get there. And I think, you know, what I heard on Tuesday night from town folk as well, especially the town manager, there's a commitment in this town to decrease class size to our goals.
Yeah, you know, for me, I was able to say that that was met because the goal doesn't say decrease all class sizes or meet the goal across the district for, you know, we're still working on that. We're going to be working on that for a few years. But have we decreased class sizes? We have. We have some classes that are smaller than they were. And we're not having a conversation about how, gee, we really meant to do that, but we didn't do anything this year because we're just waiting for this kindergarten. You know, we, you took some really creative and decisive actions with the principals and delegating their funds and, you know, targeting where we could make immediate changes. And, you know, the long-term changes will come. So that was exciting for me to realize that. I enjoy this process because it makes us really stop and think about, you know, what are we doing and how are we doing and where are we going? So I, you know, I appreciated the opportunity to reflect on this and thank you.
I think you'll enjoy it more in a couple of years, too. I just don't personally, I've been here for three and a half years to see where we've come. It just starts to resonate even more with you, so.
And in this place as well, I wanted to point out, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about why can't we add those last six teachers and get to zero this year? But the important thing to note is, had you not, what Ms. Picard was just saying, not worked on some creative work with the principals and the rest of the team, with Jim, to find money, we wouldn't be at ten teachers we're trying to add, you know? So.
If you remember the first year.
That's huge.
If you remember the first year we made this decision. First of all, I want to say, I love that this is our joint goal, right? I mean, David, the work we're doing on the Brad Street is directly, and it's not me, it's all of us, Jim, all of us. So I love that this is our joint goal. But if you remember, I think back to the first year where in my budget, I put two teachers and didn't, and then didn't actually hire those teachers. Do you remember? We used $55,000 for Lucy Hawkins' writing because it was before we had the Medicaid. It was like, why are you putting in a budget teachers that you can't even hire? And I'm like, because there's a plan, right? So it's exciting that we've been able to over time, and that was my comments at the time, meaning like, there's a plan and as long as we all know what the plan is, we will get there. And I remember that first year, people thought I was nuts, putting in two positions that I didn't have any intention to hire. But it was the right thing to do for our schools.
Because we would be, we would be looking at ten.
Yeah.
Ten or eleven today, so.
One thing that jumped out at me, especially on Tuesday at a town meeting, was, you know, my involvement, my experience goes back many, many years in the town with different roles I've had. You know, we are the advocates for the schools, we're the advocates for the children, but we do not operate in a silo. We work within a framework of the town and the town budget. And while there are people that want to, you know, push and say, demand more, ask more, believe me, there was nothing I would rather have is, you know, a couple more million more dollars to do all these things. But, you know, we're not by ourselves. We have to work with the town. And I think Andrew, especially, the town manager, made this point on Tuesday night. The relationship that he has developed over the last few years with Dr. Price and the schools is a model for the state. And I have every confidence that Greg is going to continue that as well. And I think it's our duty, as school members, to make sure that that happens. Our board select, which I know is supportive of our schools, we're in this together. Again, it's not going as fast as some people want, but we're doing it together. And it's, it's something that I'm proud of.
Are there any other key things that people want to highlight? I mean, I think it's all right here. It shows pretty tremendously that things were achieved. You have done what you set out to do. Sorry to see you go, right?
I have no specific comment, but a general overall comment in that your vision and your creativity are off the charts. And I think that's what really allowed us to accomplish, or you to accomplish, all of these things. And that is measured through all of the things, not one particular category. But it's just, I'm truly impressed and blown away by your foresight and your thinking outside the box and your innovation.
And it is leadership, so it's not, you know, it's not the superintendent does all this stuff. The superintendent gathers the people together to come up with creative solutions and take responsibility.
Technology and comprehensive human resources and consistent curriculum, I mean, that's really, I think, the greatest people I get to work with on a daily basis. And, you know, Jim has been really creative in figuring out how to fund it. And Gilly's been incredibly thoughtful and innovative around trying to figure out. I mean, the curriculum changes we've had in this district in the last three years are, I would put it against any district in the country in terms of the thoughtfulness and the implementation. And, you know, Donna has done an incredible job really changing the culture around supporting all students within this, in this district. And, you know, much of this, for instance, we wouldn't be able to afford if it wasn't we were reducing out-of-district costs. So, I mean, there's a lot of people working on this together. Mike and his work on I T has been stunning. Carrie and her work on human resources. I mean, it's a team effort. And so I think, I just feel really fortunate. And then you guys have given us the rope. I mean, that's the other component is many school committees wouldn't let us kind of color as far outside the box as we have. And I've really appreciated that you've let us do that because I think it's really impacted and helped the district. You know, there's a lot of school committees who would say, okay, you're going to change the writing curriculum, the math curriculum, and the reading curriculum in three years? Go for it. And you guys have, so it's really a testament to all of you.
Well, to me, the testament to agreeing to that decision is the fact that, as Lorraine just said, a whole bunch of teachers come voluntarily for P D in the morning and are part of study groups and on top of their families and all the other work they're doing to change all this. Again, that comes from building an appropriate team and team spirit, so.
I think, you know, when Dr. Price made the announcement back in September, October, whenever it was that she was leaving, I mean, there was a collective groan, I think, in some quarters of the town. And while, you know, I wouldn't say I was groaning, I was, you know, happy for you and your move. But, you know, I know the team you've built over the last several years. These three folks in particular, very happy. And I know we're well-positioned going forward. And that's a credit to your leadership, but it's also a credit to all of you as well.
Thank you guys very much. I appreciated your comments very much and thank you for taking the time to do this for me. Especially, you know, when you didn't necessarily have to take the time and energy as I'm headed out the door. But I appreciate the opportunity for the growth that it allows me to have as a leader.
Well, like Helen said, it shows that a whole lot has happened this past year, so, thank you. And as I said, Mr. McDevitt will have his moment when he comes back to comment.
I think too, you know, just to say, you know, we've asked you to focus to the finish. You said you would focus to the finish. We needed to do this to be part of that focus to the finish, right?
Absolutely.
We're going all the way through.
We're not done yet.
We're not done.
We've got some modulars that are going to get dropped on twenty-seven to June.
She's running through the tape like she said she would.
Yeah, we heard you're going to unpack boxes, that's good.
Yeah, that's in August, but if you'll let me back in.
All right.
You need a visitor's pass if you want to cover that.
Corey Form. Corey Form. Um, Mr. Mealy, do you wanna talk about the budget update?
Always.
I know it's your dream, so.
I do have to disagree with something Lorene said. I find the more golf I play, the worse I get. Um, this time of year, just.
Cause you don't have a good coach.
Ooh. The, um, what we do logistically is, at this time of year, we're closing out our P O and, um, moving money around to where we need it. Um, we are still projecting that we will pretty much break even for the year, um, which is a good thing. Um, with the biggest strain, as I've been saying, um, the utilities of winter was tough, so heating and, uh, electricity have been high. Um, so we're moving money around to, to cover those and, um, the only outstanding item, um, Jen's been monitoring very closely, has been, um, the possibility that we may get more in circuit breaker than we had anticipated.
I should've mentioned that during.
And we've also talked about what we would do if that's the case and that would be to, um, prepay, um, which we have the ability to do for out-of-district, for special education costs. Um, and that would put us a little bit ahead if that happens for, to start the year. Um, so other than that, it's reflecting pretty much what we've been saying for the year.
So, yeah, so just so people understand, a lot's happening down in Boston at the moment, um, working on various funding sources and one of the first ones that's looking pretty promising is the circuit breaker.
Yeah, it was funded at sixty-five percent. Um, we were hoping for seventy-two percent and the recent most, the most recent has actually seventy-five percent. Um, and it's in a joint committee and headed to the governor's desk. I mean, and this is F Y eighteen. So this becomes a significant game changer for us as we close out the year and then also kind of get ourselves in the best possible spaces for next year.
Exactly.
So. All indications from our, um, delegation is that this is going to happen. Um, I just wanted to see it happen.
Right. I, I wanna pen and. Yeah, that's why I didn't mention it. Very good. Any questions for Mr. Mealy? So we do have a new business on the revolving accounts adjustments?
Right. So the other thing we do this time of year, and this is the first reading, um, is make adjustments to, usually it, it's just, uh, community programs and food services and it's based on increased expenses due to increased usage, um, or participation. And that's exactly what's going on here. And the other part being, um, whether or not we're going to have enough funds to, uh, have the food services cover their end of noon attendance. Food services pay for the, uh, noon attendance while they're monitoring lunch. And then they're paid out of the general fund for monitoring leases. And then food services, it's for the, um, indirect costs. They use our facilities, um, and so they pick up some of the utility costs and custodial costs. Um, so what we're looking to do is just, um, vote to increase some line items so that we can pay for the increased participation and for those indirect costs in noon attendance. We may, and I will send this to you as soon as we find out, we may be adding athletics to this as well. Um, there's been increased participation, um, especially from track.
I was gonna say, it's gotta be track, yeah.
Yeah.
At the middle school level, right?
Yeah, both, both middle and high. Um, and, and there are some expenses that they hadn't anticipated, especially officials have been higher this year. So, um, we may add that one on, uh, but I'll let you know. And then we'll look for approval at the next meeting.
Okay. Any questions? Looks good, thank you.